Okay, it is Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. Calling me into order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Minutes and reports received and filed?
Yes. We have the reporters, July 2022 fees, auditors, July 22 revenue and expenditure report, and county clerks, July 22 fees.
Okay. Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Communities Thursday morning. Coke extension meeting Thursday evening. Eastside Business Association meeting Friday morning. OSH Bend Parish Picnic, St. Margaret's Sunday. I think that's about it.
I have a salute to America meeting tomorrow. A Nicole County Community Breakfast on Thursday. Heartland Port Executive Committee meeting on Thursday. Friday, J.C. Chamber Government Relations Committee.
Okay. Tonight is National Night Out. There's a ceremony at the Presbyterian Church at 7:00 p.m. I will be there Thursday. Communities is our great emergency management director is the program, so everybody come out.
So he's buying breakfast?
I am.
Oh.
I am, yeah. Then I have a Navy League meeting in the afternoon. Saturday is Piccadilly and White. Everybody wants to go, and that's all I've got.
Election Day today.
Election Day today. Well, everybody has voted, right? Okay.
Polls open until Saturday night?
Yeah. You know, if you gave suckers, we'd probably get more people. Okay.
I get stickers, yeah.
Appointments by commission, appointments to Care Leave Committee?
Yes, we had an open position on the Care Leave Committee due to Robin retiring, so we'd like to add Tamara Galberth, if I'm saying that right, from the Sheriff's Department, to the Care Leave Committee.
Works for me.
Make a motion to appoint Tamara, say Galberth?
Yeah. She's at the bottom.
Garber?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought you said Galberth.
I did, probably.
Tamara Garber to the Care Leave Program Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, resolutions and proclamations. The proclamation for the World Breastfeeding Week. Do you all want to?
Can I say something first?
Yes, please.
So, a lot of the, well, we have a lot of members here of the Cole County Breastfeeding Coalition. These ladies do a lot in the community to promote breastfeeding. This past week, they even had a booth at the fair that provided a clean, cool space for mothers to nurses to express milk and also to change diapers. I guess there was not a single place at the, on the fairgrounds for people to have a clean place to change their baby's diapers. So they got a lot of visitors, they gave away a lot of prizes, and really made a lot of connections in the community. So I'm very happy that we have such a strong coalition here in Cole County, and it's because of all these ladies that are sitting behind me. I have nothing to.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
All of them.
Thank you very much.
So, Melinda and her staff and community members, of course, based on her day, so they will accept the proclamation.
Okay.
I'm here to support that.
Come on up.
Come on up.
All the worker bees.
Great. Okay, we have a proclamation of Cole County Commission, whereas the Cole County Health Department recognizes World Breastfeeding Week, August 1st through the 7th, 2022, by promoting this year's theme, Step Up for Breastfeeding Education and Support. Whereas to raise awareness of the numerous benefits of breastfeeding, to strengthen individual, family, employer, and community support for breastfeeding, to further strategies that promote breastfeeding practices, and to support increasing breastfeeding rates, and whereas the American Academy of Pediatrics states that infant nutrition should be considered a public health issue and recognizes breastfeeding as preferred method of infant feeding. And whereas breastfeeding not only promotes overall infant health, growth, and development, it also provides a stronger immunity to viruses and infections, as well as reduces the risk of sudden infant death syndrome, asthma, obesity, diabetes, and other chronic illness in childhood and later adulthood. And whereas mothers benefit from breastfeeding as it is not only, as it not only advances postpartum recovery, but decreases the risk of ovarian, uterine, and endometrial cancer, as well as anemia, diabetes, and osteoporosis. And whereas accommodations for breastfeeding at work benefit not only women and children, but employers due to cost savings related to healthcare, including less illness among breastfed children, less missed work, higher morale, and a stronger sense of loyalty among female employees. And whereas the Cole County Health Department recognizes it is vital for families to make informed choices about the health and care of their infants, and applauds increased efforts by hospital staff, healthcare providers, employers, and daycare providers to encourage and support breastfeeding. Now, therefore, we, the Cole County Commission, by the authority vested in us by the laws of Missouri, do hereby proclaim the week of August 1st through the 7th as World Breastfeeding Week. That's.
Substantial. Come on, Brian.
Twenty-fifth one, yeah.
Thank you. Thank the hospitals, thank you all. Thank you all.
That's true.
Found out too, it's kids.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, bids and contracts, approval and signing of 2021-20 Propane Provision and Service Amendment.
Last year, we bid out the propane services for Public Works, where MFA Oil out in California was awarded the contract. We're looking to extend their contract for another year. Their cost per gallon was $1.30 for up to 5,000 gallons, and with this extension, the increase is going to be $1.90. So today, I'm just needing approval and signing of the contract with MFA Oil.
Is the increase to $1.90 or an increase of?
$1.90.
That's the total.
The total.
It's a 60 cent increase.
Yes.
Got it.
How many extensions do we have on those? Is that a three?
This is just the first one. Oh, three total? Yes.
Okay, this is the first of those three, okay. Have fun with it.
The name of the carrier again?
MFA Oil.
You have a contract to then?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to sign the amendment 2120. I'm sorry, 2021-20 Propane Provision and Services with the MFA Oil.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Signing of CCEMS JCFD MOU for Medical First Response.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this is a MOU between us and Jefferson City Fire Department for their first response to medical emergencies within the city of Jefferson. There was a agreement in place up until roughly this point of the year that was put in right when I arrived, and Chief Schofield and I have kind of analyzed the playing field and really sat down and kind of figured out what is best for both departments moving forward. This memorandum really captures the spirit that both operations are committed to at this point in time. So we're asking that we go ahead and sign this agreement effective today through the end of the year, and then it's our intention to then re-present this agreement, same agreement for the year of 2023 as well. With tradition, the county does make a payment of $25,000 to the city for their first response. This MOU will allow us to go ahead and get that taken care of this year. No real major changes, but just cleaned up some of the language.
Yeah, we were using, we'd been using this going back years. Now, is this a contract we can also then use with our first responders out in the county? Because, you know, we pay them $25,000 as well.
As I told Assistant Chief Gipe that once we had this signed, we'd visit that first responder MOU and get that taken care of for this year as well. So I'd anticipate seeing that in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
You got the revised contract through 2022, right?
Correct.
Okay, because I want to attach to the agenda, was it 23?
Yeah, so initially, we were going to extend it all the way through 23, but due to the fact that the budget has not been adopted for 23 yet, we did not, it's not possible to do that, so. That's why it's just through the end of the year.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to sign the CCEMS-JCFD MOU that covers the period through December 31, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Signature for you and then the signature for the auditor, just for the funds.
Okay. Okay. Approval and signing of agreement with Gridell Engineering.
So this is the contract for the geotechnical engineering study of the EMS facility. We agreed to go with the full study for the amount of $13,200. There was just some language in there that Jill wanted cleaned up before we presented this for approval. That has been taken care of, so we're just going to ask that you sign the contract or approve the contract. Oh, yep, there is a place for a signature. Sign the contract today so we can go ahead and move forward with the geotechnical study.
I'll make a motion to sign the contract with Gridell Engineering for the geo-technic?
Geo-technical.
Geo-technical study of the Adams McCarty Street, location of the new ambulance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. You want to hand that back to Mark and let him sign it? Okay. Unfinished business, Compromised Elections, Jamie Pearson.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to come back. Last time I was here, I said that I was out canvassing because I'm running for committee woman out in my precinct, and we thought we had some irregularities, so I wanted to come back and clarify that, that we do not have any issues with our voter rolls that I have been knocking on doors. The issue that I had was with South Country Club Drive. I thought it was on South Country Club Drive, but it was Country Club Drive. So because there's so many streets that are named like that, and if you don't go down a street versus a drive, you're not going to find the voter in the house. So I wanted to come back and clear that up. As I said, I am running, and so because I'm a committee woman, my responsibilities are to inform my voters of what is going on. So I have been trying to educate myself about the voting process. And so in doing so, I have used a resource called Missouri Canvassers, and I have made copies for you guys. And it's just a little short. If you can just look at, own your time. But what concerned me about the report was that it made the statement that Missouri has the six-month rule. And that means that after we have the election tonight, we will get the number of votes, okay? But we will not have the number of voters. And because we have a six-month rule, our county clerks across the state are allowed, six months, to put a report together to clarify who voted. Not saying who they voted for, but who voted. And so I'm hoping that I'm going to be winning. And so when I win, if I do, I am wanting to come in and get another printout, a list of all the voters that voted in this last election. I don't care who they voted for, but it's my responsibility to contact my people and say, "Thank you for voting," or "I'm getting ready to go down to the Capitol, and I'm going to be doing this," and so on and so forth. So I went into the county clerks, and I was informed that after the votes are certified, that they will be giving me a list. So just wanted to let you guys know about the six-month rule, and then also the irregularities. And thank you for your time, and get out and vote, everybody.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carla, did you have a few things you wanted to say?
My first question is, have you all discussed the 22-month preservation of evidence and records of 2020? That was the request when I first came in about election intake. Are the, any discussion occurred, Sam?
I mentioned to Steve, it, the county clerk is an elected official. So we have no authority as to, you know, how he runs the county, the clerk's office. So, yeah, he is aware of this, and.
Did he tell you how to preserve it extra?
No, I just mentioned the fact that you had brought that issue up.
Okay, so nobody knows if you can or what the cost would be?
Okay.
No?
I'm sorry.
No one knows if there's an extra cost to preserve it longer or?
Oh, I'm sure there would be, but I, yeah.
You don't know?
It's, again, that's something that he and then the Secretary of State basically, you know, he answers to the Secretary of State, and so depending on what their rules and regulations are, that's what he follows.
Okay, so just a little more research on election. I like the title, Compromised Elections. So the county commission is referred to as a court, and you have the responsibility to approve all contracts and purchase all supplies, materials, and equipment required for the operation and maintenance of offices, departments, or agencies of the county. And so one question that I have about elections and the computers. Some local election officials in counties that use election computers sign contracts that they are forbidden to look at the source codes of the privately-owned computer software, which tell the county computers what to do on election night. So I'm wondering if that's something you all can find out. This is not anything new. We've even got Jamie Raskin from 2014 and 2018 saying it's unheard of, for instance, in a bank, and if they have anomalies or potential hack that they need to investigate, that they are supposed to call the software licensor or the software company and get them to examine their own software and decide whether their software was hacked or flawed in some way. He says that's preposterous, and yet we allow that in our elections. There's a acronym, HABA, which is the Help America Vote Act of 2002. And we receive money, I was looking through our budget, we receive money from that group, but their prevention and detection of election fraud and error will never happen because they advocate for the electronic voting machines. I'm giving you just a few more references, such as the Supreme Court decision. I'm not sure what a decision is compared to an opinion, but number two, I've highlighted that we, as your constituents and residents, we have a right to know that our vote was counted accurately. So a lot of these researchers for 20 years are saying that once it goes into the machines, if it's owned and it's proprietary software, we don't know how it's counted. And we have not checked our source codes because possibly we've signed contracts that say we're not allowed to look at the source code. And so that is mainly what I wanted to bring here today. New Hampshire is one place that we could look at that does do hand counts, and that's on the third page. And in 22 months, will I hear anything else from you all, or is that?
I would, I mean, you can talk to Steve. Today is not a good day to talk to him, but I would talk to Steve because that is something that he really controls.
Okay, so that's, I just wanted to give you an update on more resources for you to look at and consider, and maybe one day we'll come in and ask for you all to make a proper decision.
Carla, could you put in, in a, in written form, here, this is my question?
Sure.
And just give us your questions, that way we can, we'd be sure we understand what the question is.
Sure. Will do, Harry. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. New business, accounts payable review?
We don't have any accounts payable this week, so.
Okay. And we are going to postpone the purchase of garage store slats. So Sheriff Wheeler has left. Courthouse Annex HVAC Upgrade Discussion.
Sent you all a proposal that you all asked me to look at when we were doing capital. Just need to see if we want to continue with it. Jill has looked at the contract. Is with MMPE Wayne Sharp, which was recommended by Jim Wish. We looked at the whole building. He noticed a lot of things with the coils, the fan units. Basically, the aluminum on the coils are starting to deteriorate, which is, which gets your transfer of heating and cooling. Building's been, we've added rooms on to the building. Prime example is we built the HR, we put a wall up in Debbie's office to split them, and we've added other areas in this building that we've created more rooms and not done anything with HVAC. Debbie can attest, this building is the worst building for energy usage. It's, so it's whatever you guys would like to do. I know we've talked about it, it's been on the capital budget for 10 years. I've had it on there. It's whatever you gentlemen would like to, if you want to continue with it or not do anything at all.
We haven't spent any money to speak of for the last two years out of capital. So we're, we have some money that we need to do some things rather than just sitting on it. So, you know, we have issues with the prosecuting attorney. We have issues when we're comfortable, then the clerk's side isn't comfortable. I don't know how Larry.
Larry set up a little different downstairs.
Okay. But we've got, yeah, we've got stuff that goes back to when it was City National.
Yes.
And so we're using some of that, and I think it's probably near the end of its life.
We had another fan unit that just went out yesterday upstairs, and Train is telling me we have maybe one more year for parts on their train stuff. So they usually cut it off after 20 years.
So if you talk about the email you sent us?
Yes, about doing, having.
Because I don't have any paperwork with what you specifically talked about in front of us. The one from MMEA?
Yeah. The one I sent you all.
Do you have that sent?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Basically.
So you want to approve a contract with them to do the?
Do a study and do a recommendation on what we need to do to?
That price was the $21.9?
Yes, sir, I believe so. I don't have it in front of me, but yes.
Okay, we kind of need that stuff. Do we have a contract, or we just need to?
Jill looked at it, the only change she recommended was taking my name off and putting Sam's on the contract. And we, Sam, I forwarded him a copy of that again last week.
Okay.
I'm all for going forward with it because you got one office has to have the windows open because it's too cold in there, and the other ones that are dying because of the humidity and heat, so.
I think this is a good start, and then I think we really do need to look at the old jail as well. But, yeah, I don't know, one of these days, we're going to come in and we're not going to have any air, we're not going to have any heat, and.
It's happened before.
Yeah.
I know, yeah.
I stopped back by last night and just to see what the water temperature of the unit going out versus coming back, and we were almost at a 15-degree difference.
Is that the one that serves the prosecutor's office upstairs? Because they were having issues?
Yeah, it serves, it serves the whole building, yeah.
Okay, because they were having worse issues up there, and that gets terribly hot and humid up there.
They had a fan unit go out yesterday.
Is this a contract for a study, or this is a contract for?
It would be a contract for them to do the study and put a proposal out for bidding. I tried to get him here today, but he's been on vacation, so.
Did you send that email to Debbie as well?
I think I did. I thought I sent it to.
No, no, she's not on there, I'll forward it to Debbie.
I'm sorry, if I didn't, I thought I did, I usually do.
And we need to have that on here, too, if this is a project.
What's the date of the email?
June 30th, 1:10 p.m.
Are they on a state contractor?
Uh, not so aware of it, but this is about the only company I could find to do that type of work, be like professional, I don't know if we can use them or not.
Are they engineers?
Yes.
Okay, engineering is a professional service.
MMPE.
I'm in favor of proceeding with the study and obtaining recommendations as to what the fix should be.
Do you have the contract, the new one, with the name changed?
No, I do not, that's what I was trying to get from him also.
Yeah, if it's on my computer, I'll print it off.
I mean, we can cross out Greg's name and write your name in there and sign it if we need to.
Yeah, we'll print it off, we can do it.
Do you want to do it that way, or?
Yeah, let's get, let's get it moving.
Yeah.
Yeah, because by the time we get the study done, we're probably looking at another 68 years.
Was I on that email, too? Oh. Can't find it.
Says you are, I don't know what address.
Okay.
I'll forward it to you, too.
I keep using the one that says Cole County, Eric.
I may have put you in a folder somewhere.
Uh-oh.
Jump mail?
Probably.
Trash.
Return, trash, return to sender.
Scratch out his name.
Okay, here it is.
And that would come out of capital, right?
Yes.
So we don't need to do a transfer, because we have some transfers coming through, too. I know we had a lot of work, and it's just, oh, I got to. That's just July, well, August now, but a lot of maintenance stuff coming through there. I know we've had a lot of maintenance things go wrong, so. lot of maintenance, ain't go wrong, so.
Yeah, did meet with, finally got to meet with Judge, Kevin, and myself over at courthouse. We're all on board. Kevin said give him two to three weeks, and he'll have something wrote up for all the locks in that building.
Okay.
One other thing, I'm gonna have to get a lift on the southwest corner to get up to look at the gutter to see if it's obstructed, because I got water coming over and dumping on that side of the building, on the courthouse, so.
I'll make a motion to execute the proposal number 22014, Cole County Courthouse Annex HVAC upgrades study with MMo Engineering Alliance, Inc.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mike, you go.
Thanks, Fred. Thank you. Okay. Anything else where we're going to close session?
I just, do you have?
Oh. Yes.
Actually, I wanted to say a few words about monkeypox. We've been getting, starting to get a lot of calls, people asking about vaccine. I wanted to tell you that right now there's only five cases in the entire state of Missouri. CDC numbers show us at eight, but toward the state medical epidemiologist, Dr. Trevor Lietz, we only have five cases in the state. But because there's been some news about vaccine, people are starting to get concerned. And right now, there's only two types of vaccine. One for people who have been exposed to a confirmed case of monkeypox, and one for people who have been exposed to a suspect case. There's no vaccine for the general public, because there's really not a lot of risk for the general public. The transmission is mostly men who have sex with men who have multiple partners. And then once a person, you know, develops the pox, the lesions, if you have, you know, very intimate, close contact with them and the lesions, you know, you're exposed that way. But it's not like COVID where, you know, coughing, biting, you know, with close contact with someone, then not touching, things like that. It's not transmitted that way. Unfortunately, people are seeing things on the news, and they're starting to be very concerned when they probably shouldn't be. But, so we're starting to get people just walking in, wanting to know if we have the vaccine, calling, wanting to know if they can have it, when they've had no exposure to anyone who is a suspect or a confirmed case. So they're not eligible. There's, there's no vaccine for the general public at this time because it's probably not needed. So is that, anyway? If you get questions, but I just know we're starting to get people who are, are, you know, concerned, and we're trying to maybe ease those fears because they probably don't need to be concerned unless they are, fall into that specific risk category, or they know someone who's in that risk category.
Perhaps we can get News Tribune to do a story and get with you.
I think our national health leaders need to be more open about how you catch it and how you don't. And they're, they are a little too silent on the specifics.
And unfortunately, it's scaring people unnecessarily.
Right.
Probably need to, I'll probably give a shout-out to about doing a story about rabies. We've had, and this summer, we have had a positive bat here in, in Cole County for rabies. And then we've had some other calls where people are finding bats in their house, and they're catching them, and they're letting them go. And really, if you don't know if you've been bitten, because, you know, a bat can bite you and very, leave very small marks, you know, we really need them to keep the bat and send it in for testing. The only way to know is to test the brain. So we might do a story just about education about bats, because, you know, rabies is, unlike some other viruses that are 98.9% survivable, rabies is probably 99.999% fatal. And it's very serious. And if you have a bat in your home and you don't know if it bit you or not, you need to have it tested, and you need to start the post-exposure prophylaxis, because it's very serious. So a couple of education pieces that we hope to get out.
But don't go killing the bats.
No, I mean, yeah, if they're not, yeah.
Keep them mosquitoes away.
Yeah, if they're outside, fine, but, you know, if you wake up and there's one on you, you need to be concerned.
I would be.
And we, you know, catch it, put it in a coffee can, and put it in the freezer. That's what we do. That's the easiest way to kill them, so they can test the brain, so.
Does that test come back immediately, or just?
It's pretty quick. Yeah, and make sure your pets are vaccinated, seriously. So it's pretty quick, yeah.
Hadn't thought of that.
But they usually start the post-exposure prophylaxis while they're waiting, so. Because it's better to be safe than sorry with rabies, so.
Kristy, how about the update on the event?
Oh, sure. So next week, I was gonna give a, an update on our total United Way campaign, but the event on the 22nd was a success. I think we raised about $2,275 just that night. We had 22 teams compete in a competitive and a recreational division, so Jeff and his partner won the recreational.
But we didn't get a cup. That's why Joe didn't try real hard.
We might come up with, if we do this yearly, come up with a commissioner's cup.
There you go.
And it can, it can be a traveling, we put their name on it for that year.
So we had great prizes. Crazy fries was there, some great food trucks, so really good event. I appreciate all the people that came out, even if they, you know, they weren't. But we did have whole departments that had no risk representation, so maybe they should have to run the event next year.
I think you're doing such a good job.
No, man.
We'll keep...
We won't get fired, huh?
No.
Okay, so next week, we will hopefully have all the pledge cards in. We're still waiting for just a few, and we will draw winners and give a total update on how much we raised. But I will tell you that we're over our goal already, so I'm pretty excited about that.
Yes.
That event was impressive.
Thanks.
It was well done.
Thank you.
And the folks were having a good time.
And the venue was great.
Venue was perfect.
It was so nice. I had to let it use the hangar, it was great.
Yeah, I sent thank yous to...
It was warm, but it wasn't like miserable either.
To Richard Campeter and to Grant Shorthurst, because really, it was a great location.
And crazy fries.
And crazy fries. They, they were wonderful, too. So it was, yeah, next year, maybe News Tribune will even have a team.
Well, I had, saw one of the News Tribune staff and gave them a flyer, but they didn't have, not you.
Jeff looks like a pretty good...
Was that Friday night?
Yeah, so 22nd. 22nd, yeah. Anyway, so next week, we'll have a full report with the totals that we raised. And the sign is up at the Health Department, so the judging, I think, is August 12th.
Thank you for doing that, Kristy.
Like I said, I have great staff who volunteered to help me. It wasn't me. All me.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, we had a salary request form, pay form request come through. I left it on my desk. It was from prosecutor's office. That was an increase in, or what position was that? It's, it's taken care of partially by a grant, but not fully by a grant. I sent some questions on it. It was raising the position by $5,100. And then is that $5,100 gonna be taken care of by the grant, or a portion of it, or are we eating it all? Because this has a direct effect on our budget. Not maybe this year, if he's got a vacant position, so he's able to keep it out of the salary line, but next year, are they gonna take a pay cut if we don't have it in the budget? Because it's gonna increase.
When did that come through? I didn't...
Last week, I think.
Oh, okay, yeah.
How about just putting those questions in, in a note and shipping them upstairs? Finding, I, I ran the numbers by pulling up the general ledger. There is no problem there this year in terms of staying under budget. I didn't, was satisfied with that.
Well, the problem with that, though, is if you have a vacant position, you can give somebody a raise and use that money that wasn't spoken for by the vacant position, and then next year, in the budget, it's gonna throw things all kinds of crazy. And so if, if we let one department do it, everybody's gonna do it, and it's gonna be a mess, and we're gonna break the company. So that's just my concern. I think that any, any salary increases need to come through a commission meeting. It's here for us to scrutinize, ask questions in, in public, so.
I think, was that the, what was it? What was the grant?
Baka, Boca, Boca Baka.
Yeah. So is that what this is again? I, it seems to me, when, when we discussed it was, if the grant goes away, then this person's gonna go away.
The grant has to pay 80% of the old rate, so I'm not sure what it's paying.
And it's a $5,100 increase in salary, so is the grant gonna cover 80% of that increase in salary as well?
I don't, I don't know. So we need, we do need to ask.
But I still think it needs to come from a meeting, so we can ask questions, and everybody knows what's going on. And just when it goes through, it's just a transfer or the salary paycheck.
Agreed.
You don't always catch stuff like that, but, so that's all I had.
Okay. Anything else? Need a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make a motion to, pursuant to Section 610.021 of the RSMO, the commission will go into closed session to discuss the following. Existing or proposed security systems under Section 610.021, Para N19, closed para.
Second.
We're all called?
Sam?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Okay.